Everyone and welcome. I would like to call the City Council, portion of this City Council Port Authority concurrent meeting to order.
You're going to do your roll call through? Okay. All right. And I would like to call the Port Authority over.
And we'll start as we do with a roll call. Mr. Brillert, if you could call the roll of the City Council, please.
Baloga.
Present.
Carter.
Present.
Coulter.
Present.
Loman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Bussie.
Here. Six of the seven members of the Bloomington City Council are present this evening, missing only Councilmember Martin.
And then could you please call the roll for the Port Authority?
Bussie.
Present.
Carter.
Present.
Keller.
Present.
Luns.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
And Erickson.
Present.
We have six present, one absent.
Very good. We have five items of new business on tonight's agenda, including, the fifth item is a closed session to discuss a possible acquisition of the adjoining lands in the Spruce Shadows Farm. And so we will be going into closed session for folks who are in the room here and who are watching at home. And when we get to that, we will pass a resolution to go into that closed session and we'll have to close out and then come back into open session to act on any decisions that we had made during the closed session and to eventually close the meeting or adjourn the meeting. Guess we can say close and adjourn, we're going to get confused there if we do it that way. So our first item tonight is item 1.1, which is a resolution approving laws of Minnesota 2021. Mr. Redling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Mr. President and Port Authority members. So tonight, the first two items relate to laws that were passed as part of the 2021 legislative session. And it's important for the City of Bloomington, not the Port Authority, to approve these laws before the next legislative session begins in order for the city to use those laws. And so that's what we're asking and recommending of the council to do this evening is to, again, for both of these items, 1.1 and 1.2, to approve the special session, chapter, article and section related to American Boulevard in the first item and 98th Street and Aldrich in the second item. They both relate to redevelopment TIF districts that were put into law in 2021 that the city requested and sought special legislation for those redevelopment projects. And be happy to answer any questions related to that.
Also, any questions of Mr. Redling? Port, any questions, any informational portion of this? It's just an informational item for the port, for the council, we are looking for action. So council, I look for action first on item 1.1. Councilmember Coulter.
I can make the motion. Mayor, I will move to adopt a resolution approving laws, sorry, I thought I heard, I will move to adopt a resolution approving laws of Minnesota 2021, first special session, Chapter 14, Article 9, Section 7, relating to American Boulevard Tax Increment Financing District.
Second, we have a motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember Loman, to adopt the resolution approving laws of Minnesota 2021, first special session as noted. There are no further council discussion on this? Mr. Brillert.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Also looking for action on item 1.2. Councilmember Coulter.
All right. Mayor, I will move to adopt a resolution approving laws of Minnesota 2021 for special session, Chapter 14, Article 9, Section 7, relating to 98th Street and Aldrich Tax Increment Financing District.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember Loman, to approve item 1.2 as stated. No further council discussion on this? Mr. Brillert.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Item 1.3, discussion of the Small Business Development Center, something that both the port and the council have talked about in the past, and interested to hear more. I've heard bits and pieces and I'm very intrigued about where we might be headed here. So, good evening to Carla Henderson and to Barb, well, thank you Barb, I looked at you and completely blanked, I apologize.
Okay. It's hard to see me with my mask on.
It is.
So, good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Mr. President and Port Authority Commission members. We are here this evening to talk about the Small Business Development Center project. So, kind of the question is, is how did we get here? And why are we asking to apply for this federal funding of $1.5 million for a small business development center? So, last year, due to the pandemic, the CARES Act funding, the City Council did appropriate dollars to our small business community for forgivable loans. Working with that program, with other staff, I myself hadn't, as my job here at the city, hadn't worked with businesses in the past. And so as part of this effort, going out to the neighborhood commercial nodes where we know that there's a lot of small businesses, I went out to the businesses door to door to tell them about this program, to meet business owners, to build relationships, establish trust, and, you know, sort of have a face to the city. And through these efforts, it really became pretty clear that the city could do a much better job of communicating with the small business owners, trying to retain them, build their capacity and their growth. Also along with that is part of the Racial Equity Strategic Planning Committee, they, this was a committee convened by staff in order to identify some of the most impactful policies and practices that the city can engage in and collaborate with organizations in order to reduce racial disparities. And that could be anywhere from housing to education to healthcare to our social and community context. And so through this group, they did identify a small business resource center as one of the priorities for the city. This also does align with a number of the council's strategic priorities. The development of the neighborhood commercial nodes, which I mentioned, we know that those are older neighborhood nodes, and a lot of those have lower rents, they have smaller businesses, and we know that they are, a lot of them are culturally owned as well, which is where I focus my efforts on. This can also diversify the local economy, building the growth and the capacity, and environmental sustainability. You know, when we first were looking at this, we weren't sure where the location would be, but now we've focused on the former Fire Station 3 over in the South Loop District, and prior plans for that were to tear it down. So this would be renovating an existing building owned by the city, and then also expanding our high-quality services that the city already has, but helping the small business community. I was last before you for the small business survey, and that was just recently conducted, and as part of that, 84% of the respondents stated that it would be a good idea for the city to have a city-led small business resource center. So this slide here, I just wanted to bring it back to the Racial Equity Strategic Planning Committee, and this is where their priorities came out of here. And so this is one of them, the small business support, and looking at supporting our entrepreneurs and small businesses. And this was a little picture that came out of that, and so it just sort of is very warming and sentimental that, you know, here's a little building that we have, and this is us conducting a resource center where businesses can come to us and we can help them with those needs that they have. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Director of Community Development, Carla Henderson.
Thank you, Barb. So Faith Jackson was going to be here this evening, but she was unable to, but we definitely wanted to uplift the work that she did with the Racial Equity Strategic Planning Committee, led by Councilmember, Port Authority member Jenna Carter. So this was birthed out of that work. So, a couple of months ago, we submitted before council the use of half a million dollars for the American Rescue Plan Act funds for a neighborhood development center. And I remember being at that meeting and some council people were, members were asking our city manager, well, who's going to staff it? Is it going to be current staff? And at that point, I thought, well, we had some more work to do. And then I started to think about, how do we leverage this half a million dollars? And so reached out to the McKnight Foundation, the new president and CEO actually is from Detroit, and I did work with her there. Faith Jackson and I did a call with her, and we said, we have this concept, do you think, you know, this foundation could support it? She said, I think so, but let me get a program officer on there. And lo and behold, we ended up talking to a gentleman who was raised here in Bloomington, went to Kennedy High School, his parents still live here, and he encouraged us to apply the initial inquiry, and then we just got word last week that the foundation would like us to put a full proposal together. So Carolyn, next, I want to talk through kind of like some of the leveraging the ARPA funds for additional funding sources. So, we're going to ask McKnight Foundation for $250,000. Then Barb happened to be on the phone, I kind of joked like, this is the project that keeps growing. Barb was on the phone with Hennepin County, and they said, you know, you should really talk to the EDA. They have three times the amount of funding through the ARPA funds, and so through Jason, talking to our regional representative out of Chicago, Barb made that connection, and he was extremely encouraged and encouraged us to apply because they have so much money set aside for this region, they don't have any applications as of today. And he said this is something that he could see the, him and his colleagues supporting. Then we, Maureen O'Brien from Legal sent us an email, well, Minnesota Deeds now has a community capital project grant for $750,000. And so as we're going through this process of identifying funding, we're like, well, we should throw our hat in the ring as well. So these would all be for capital improvements. The building is solid, Duke Johnson and Deb Williams have been involved. Duke says he had another 25, 30 years out of this building, need to make it ADA compliant, you need to upgrade the plumbing and so forth. So, so they're working on getting us those numbers. And then I turned to my colleague Shane, and I say, how can we pay for operations? So that we can, you know, can we use the South Loop levy? You know, I was like, how can we do this? And he and I talked about, maybe now's the time to start talking about turning on the port levy, and I don't know Shane if you want to add anything about our conversation with that.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, President, Commissioners. So yeah, I mean, I think it's time to start talking about potentially turning on the port levy for a project like this. I think it's something that is really supported by the council and Port Authority through all the work that, you know, we as staff have been doing during COVID for business development. And the port levy is as flexible money as there is out there because of the port's economic development powers. And it's probably a really appropriate use of that power to do an incubator focused on the things that we've all been working on. So, you know, there's a lot of steps to take before that happens, but it's something that should be considered.
Thank you, Shane. So the next slide is just a picture, like Barb said, we don't believe we should tear it down and build something new, we love the firehouse feel, we want to create a space and a community that will uplift entrepreneurs. What we love about this is that it is in a neighborhood, it is in the backyard of two affordable housing complexes managed, owned and managed by Aon, it's close to transit, and like I said, it's got good bones, as Duke said, you know, we can, we can, we can stay in there for at least 25 to 30 years. I think we should add a, create a place making component, and just really create a space where people know that they can come and are welcome, we'll do coworking as well as workshops and so forth, and really just want to turn it into a community resource. Next slide. So as we started, Barb and I do a lot of talking about this, and here's just a list of, we've been on this probably a month, a list of organizations that have said, yes, we want to support this, yes, we possibly want to do programming with you, who are providing letters of support as we make this application to the EDA. And so, you know, a lot of people are very excited about this. And quite frankly, I remember Hennepin County saying to Barb, we're so glad Bloomington is going to, you know, is talking about doing something like this. So, and then next slide? So you don't do a federal grant in six weeks without Team Bloomington. I mean, you know, Jamie threw his support behind it, and then it was like getting the other staff that we needed. I particularly want to thank Lori Economy Schuler and her team, Faith Jackson helped create some language for the application. Melissa Manderscheid said, we'll get it done, you know, of course it's additional work, but we'll get it done. And Deb Williams has really led the facility component of it. And then all the other players have been instrumental in getting this, so I just have to acknowledge that. So we are asking for a motion, a recommendation, to move the resolution forward and do, finish up the rest of the grant and submit it. I think our timeline is by the day before Thanksgiving, November 20, that will be our Thanksgiving gift, getting that done. Yes. And so, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you. I'll admit, I had a phone call with Faith this afternoon, and she kind of teased this out to me, and I was very excited to hear about the work that has been done and the possibilities that are in this. Love the idea of using the old fire station, love the idea that it's within the neighborhood. I think this is just a, this is a fantastic proposal, I'm very excited to learn more about this and to see this move forward. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, and I want to echo the comments from Barb and from Carla in terms of how this fits with the council's strategic priorities too. And this may, this may be newer information for Port Authority members, but back at the beginning of 2020, when the council had their last goal-setting session, the discussion about business development, small business support, ways that we can continue to develop and support entrepreneurialism within the community, were strong themes of that conversation. And so this is a project which I think fits squarely within the, that area that the council was interested in having us pursue. So the fact that we're able to tap into a lot of external resources to try and make this thing happen is, you know, a demonstration of the possibilities when we work with partners. And I think there's just a lot of potential here.
Absolutely. Couldn't agree more. Council, any questions?
Port Authority, any questions? Rob?
I just, I'm a building guy. What are we going to do with the buildings? Is it going to be converted, re-adaptive used to office space? It's just something about artists, and I was just kind of wondering, or it's probably maybe premature, you don't, you're going to need to get a built space planner or architect involved or something, but what's your concept?
Well, the concept is to have part of the structure as coworking space with desk so that entrepreneurs, you know, for a low membership fee can come, use the space, have their meetings there, there is a conference room that was built out and renovated. And then the larger space for workshops, training, really just, you know, one of the things, we've been talking about redoing some of the space in Civic Plaza for the community development, and Ally, who runs our community place making, said, you know, Carla, I don't have a space for my stuff, her stuff, like if you walk by her cubicle, you know, she's got stuff stacked there, and where she puts it, sometimes people move it. And I thought, well, wouldn't that be great if we can provide some space for Ally and that create a place making that's happening? So perhaps she can work out of there. But we want to keep the feel of the fire station. Duke's talked about, you know, enclosing the front doors, you know, insulating them for heat, but maybe leaving the back doors open because that's what faces the back part of the building, faces the Aon properties, and when we were out there, you could see kids playing. So we talked about maybe even reducing some of the pavement in the parking lot and doing a community garden, you know, really want to talk to the neighbors and see what they would like to do with that exterior space. But yes, so, but we've had a number of contractors going over there, giving us pricing, the roof, I think it needs to be replaced, I think the plumbing needs to be replaced, the bathrooms need to be made ADA accessible as well. But we're going to keep it very open as it currently is. That's the thought anyway. I mean, we may get to the community and they may say, oh no, we would like this, and we want to be flexible with what the community wants.
Thank you.
Commissioner Peterson?
Thank you. So one of the things that the resolution discusses is that part of the grant application requires us to make a commitment to operate a center for a certain period of time, and it's not, it's not an enormous amount of money, it's, you know, if the $250,000 is about right, you know, that over a 20-year period isn't an enormous amount of money. But I'm wondering if the city comes to the conclusion that it wants to stop doing this, what, can you talk a little bit more about what the exit strategy would be? Because it says that the application has some repayment, and I'm just curious about how that would work.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. If the center would cease to exist as an operation as a small business development center, the money would need to be paid back.
Okay. Is that like on a prorated basis, or it's?
No.
It's, if you, 19 years and 11 months, you got to pay it back, 20 years, you get it?
20 years.
Just hanging there that last year.
Hanging there that last year, okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Loman?
I wanted to ask, thank you, Mayor. When we look at the building there with the fire station, you know, I love the idea of reusing it from a sense that's very sustainable, but I know that when we've looked at other buildings in the city, you know, of that same time period, you know, we've looked at it and said, you know, if we, we put this much money in there to renovate it, it may actually be cheaper to build a new building. And so I wanted to, I didn't want to let this pass without at least asking that question, did we do an analysis of that to see if that does make the most amount of sense with respect to that, that building, kind of moving forward? I'm assuming that's what we did, but I wanted to just make sure that I asked that question.
Can I tag in on that too? Because, I mean, this station is just like the one a block from my house, and this is a cubic space building, it's open and it's high. So I'm, I was wondering, are you going to be building interior, demising walls and things like that? So it kind of ties into what Dwayne was.
Absolutely, thanks.
Do you want me to take that? Okay. Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor and Mr. President. After the building official went out there and took a look at it, my, my understanding is that for fire, because of the larger equipment and trucks that are needed now, that they need much more capacity than they have, the different bathrooms, structurally, the building is good, the building official went out and took a look at that. As opposed to, or identifying the structure within it, we are largely staying open with that space. The items that would be there to delineate spaces for individuals would be movable. So the current bathroom, the large bathroom that it is, could be storage, the other bathroom and the laundry area could be made into gender neutral, two bathrooms that are ADA accessible. But the whole general area is to just stay open and make it into spaces where it can be movable and it can be reprogrammed, whether that be a seminar or people that need to meet in a small group or meet one-on-one, or open the doors and have some of that activate the space outside. So we largely want to keep it, that structure as a fire station. I can't really speak, Commissioner Loman, to, you know, fire and, and what their needs were prior to that building.
Yeah, maybe I wasn't clear with my question. I think we, I think the assessment has been made pretty clear that the new building, I certainly am not saying that we should try to re-analyze that space, but the, my question that I'm really trying to ask is, did we do an analysis in terms of, you know, a new building as compared with, because when you do renovation, there's a cost associated with that, you know, sometimes you put You know, sometimes you put so much money in that renovation that you already got yourself, you know, a building and a half. And so I just wanted to be sure that we did that analysis and we looked to see, even though I love the idea of reutilizing that fire station, because one of my concerns is, is that after 25, you know, years, I mean, theoretically, this program will end, but, you know, if we do, did decide to continue to have this program, mayor, you know, we would want to probably have a building that would go beyond that, that time span. So I just want to be sure that we're not, you know, trying to save money now when we probably should just go ahead and, and take that investment. So I just want to be sure we're, we're really looking at that. I love the idea again of the state, but I just want to be sure that we did do that analysis.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council members, president and port commission members. In my conversations with Chief Seal, he has said, he, he said, if this was fire station number four, I would tell you, you're crazy, like, you can't do it. He said, he believes this building is secure. Our building official, Deb Williams, and we have a number of contractors. However, if I hear you saying, perhaps we should cost out the price of a new building, we can look at that. We believe that this is the more economic way to go, but if that's what I hear you saying.
Well, you know, I mean, certainly I don't, this is just one council member's, you know, question and I certainly trust, you know, Chief Seal and those folks there, but I just want to make sure that as we're, as we're going into this, because I think we want to make a long-term investment, you know, in this. And I, I just, I certainly love the reuse part of it, but I think that also because of the communities in which that we are attempting to try to serve here, I think as a city, we want to make a long-term investment. And so I would be concerned that, you know, when, when I hear 25 years, that just doesn't feel right. But, you know, I mean, I'd be curious what other council members or other port authority members would think of that. Maybe I'm not looking at this the right way.
Well, I was just going to comment on two things. One, and I think the mayor probably could, two, since he was involved with doing a lot of the building at the University of Minnesota, but this is a project that, when, when I was with Supervalue Stores for years, this is a very simple structure. It's got a good solid floor. We like interstitial heights because you can take and put air conditioning and everything else in. If the roof is in good condition and even if it isn't, it's probably far cheaper to repair that. So I can't imagine a scenario really where if you have something like this that can be adapted, that it's not going to be the most cost-effective use. The other thing I just wanted to comment on while we're talking about this is being an accountant by training and also working with, with, with low-income people in preparing tax returns. And we also help some small businesses and that, that can have a lot of revenue, but this is something that's extremely confusing to anybody trying to start. I mean, it's not just taxes, it's, it's all the permits and everything else. And so I think having some method that you can take somebody and give them a place to look at something and some support and a lot of it's just encouragement and say, yeah, you've got a good idea there. Why don't you, you know, give it a shot? And, and it's not a big thing. And so I, I really think that this concept is one that is, is really a very important one for us.
And I will say, Councilmember Loman, I understand what you're saying. I do think a, even if it is just a 25-year reuse of a building, I think it's, I think it's a worthwhile investment to get 25 years out of this from a sustainability standpoint and from the standpoint of this is a program, a new program that we're trying to figure out how to best work it. And I think to move into this, to, to adapt, to have a wide-open space like that and make it very adaptable as goals change, perhaps as they make some adjustments to the programming and so on, I do think it's the way to go. I see what you're saying. Does it make sense to scrape it clean and build again? I don't think we could do that for what we've, for, for the budget that is out there right now. So I think this is a, this is a, a sound reuse of it for the, for the money that we have available. And I will say, Commissioner Luns, to your point, so the, I've had an opportunity to see a couple of other business incubators in other cities and they are the best, the best incubators that I've seen for the best feel, as, as President Erickson was saying, the best feel is one of kind of an open space of congeniality. And the, the high ceilings are always a, a feature of what I've seen for a variety of reasons, whether or not they moved into an old space, whether it's a warehouse, or it just makes sense in terms of what they're trying to create. They need the height or something along those lines. So I do think this, this open floor space that could be parsed out if need be, if people need their own space for whatever reason, if that might be something that you look at in the future. I'm envisioning it, I mean, when you described it, what I saw in my mind was the community commons at the Mall of America, a big empty space in, was it Nordstrom or is it?
Bloomingdale's?
Blooming, that was what it was, Bloomingdale's, excuse me, Bloomingdale's. An empty space for different businesses to be able to basically try out things and try and figure it out. And that, that's what I see this as, even that step before a, the community commons, this is that space where they get to that point where they can move into a community commons. Just then. Councilmember Luns, and then I do see you, Councilmember Nelson, we'll get to you in just a second.
Just out of curiosity, how many square feet is the building?
Sixty-four hundred.
Sixty-four hundred? Okay. It's a shame it doesn't have the ambiance of a brass fireman firefighter pool.
I said the same thing. I thought maybe we should put one in.
We could have the Luns pool.
I'd put a hundred dollars behind that.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. First of all, I really support this project and thank you for the good work. It's something that I've been talking about and, you know, very appreciative of the support for the small business community. Just a couple of quick questions here. I believe if I recall correctly, when we talked about the new fire station and we're looking at this other fire station, we were informed that this building was needed for storage, that we were over capacity at other places. How have we addressed that storage issue with this plan? And I don't, I don't even know what's stored there, but.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Nelson. We're looking at doing the pre-development, all the design and planning that would need to be done in 2022 with the anticipation of construction beginning in spring of 2023 and finishing in fall of 2023, which falls in line with Deb Williams over in Public Works, project manager on these fire stations for that to happen, because that was very important to Chief Seal as well.
And if, Councilmember Nelson, if I could add, in conversations with Chief Seals, he does believe that if our timeline got pushed up or his got delayed, that we haven't talked to Director Carl Keel about this yet, but that there may be some space at Public Works.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure we took care of that. The second thing, this doesn't bind us to any particular funding source for the operations of it if we move this forward tonight, does it?
It, it does not, no.
Okay. Then I will wait and, because I have some questions about an additional levy and, and things like that. When we have the South Loop Development Fund, you know, I'm a big proponent of having a business plan that we can try to create something that breaks even or better through the partnerships that you listed and things like that. So, but I don't think we need to go into that right now. I'm supportive of this tonight to move forward with the capital and to creating the space. And I think it's, I think it's wonderful. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Keller?
Yeah, I have kind of a process question. So I've heard the discussion, obviously, in the last few minutes about what would it look like inside and why and all that sort of thing. I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, that how that's all going to come together is part of the process from here forward and we haven't predetermined anything in that regard. We'll talk to people about what they need and see, you know, because as a small business person myself, I have some thoughts about those sorts of things, which may or may not be important to share, but I just want to make sure that, that we have included in this whole thing that as part of the steps to get there, reaching out to people who are both potential users and also people who have some expertise and, and what really is helpful and necessary.
Well, great. Mr. Mayor, city council, president and commission members. Commissioner Keller, we want to put an advisory committee together. We would love for you to be part of that. We've already started identifying individuals.
I retract my comment. I'm sorry I even can't.
Because we do want the input of, of, of the community. So anyway, but yes, there is, this, next year, we would do a ton of community engagement and, you know, we want to create a space that works to the best of our ability for our local entrepreneurs. And so we would love your ideas, even if you just want to email them to us, we would love that.
I'd be happy to help.
Thank you.
I hope that I will remember in the future not to.
Hearing none. I think we need two motions here, one by the port authority and one by the council.
And I think the port follows the council because we affirm your motion, so.
Council, I would look for action on this. Councilmember Loman?
I'd be happy to, to provide a second. I know that there was a council member that was working on this, so I want to be mindful of that. So if she wants to step forward, otherwise I'll go ahead and move it.
Are you referring to me? I'm like, what? No. Okay, I can move it.
Councilmember Carter?
Okay. I move to support the city council's approval of a resolution supporting the application for funding the renovation of the former fire station located at 2050 86th Street East for a small business development center.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And I do want to clarify, I think you officially read the port authority motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that's okay. I think, if you could just restate it as the city council motion, which is just below.
I believe you were looking at something in the packet there. If you could refer to the one, Councilmember Carter, on the screen.
Okay.
Oh, got it, okay. Yeah, it is not the same. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So how about if we, can we rescind this, the previous motion?
Yes.
Okay, we will rescind the previous motion and we'll do this officially. Councilmember Carter?
Okay. I would move a resolution supporting the application and authoriz, and authorizing the execution of a grant agreement for the Economic Development Administration, American Rescue Plan Act, Economic Adjustment Assistance, Department of Commerce Federal Funding Opportunity.
Second, wow.
That's a lot different than the first one.
We have a motion by Councilmember Carter, a second by Councilmember Loman, for the resolution in support of the application as stated. Hearing no further, city council discussion on this. Mr. Billard?
Paluga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries six-zero.
Yep, yes. And then I would entertain a motion for the port authority affirming the action.
I will make a motion to support the city council's approval of a resolution supporting the application for funding the renovation of the former fire station.
If I could, Commissioner? I think we need to use the motion that's on the screen.
On the screen.
Yep, on the screen if we could.
A resolution.
That side of the table is an issue right now. It's the company you keep, Steve.
I will make a motion to adopt resolution, whoa, wrong one. I will make a motion to support the city council's adoption of resolution number 2021, a resolution supporting the application authorizing the execution of a grant agreement with the Economic Development Administration, American Rescue Plan Act, Economic Adjustment Assistance, Department of Commerce Federal Funding Opportunity. Sir.
Second. We have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, would you please call the roll?
Bussie?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Keller?
Aye.
Luns?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you very much.
Well, when, when we'll, what are our next steps? When will we hear back from you again? When, when would you hear about the, all of these different grant applications that you'll be making?
Well, yeah. We have three grants that we're going to get in November 24th. That is the McKnight, EDA and the Minnesota Deeds. McKnight Board of Trustees meets in February, so we should hear shortly after that. EDA?
EDA actually is on a rolling basis and, and that's where the regional director recommended that we get our app in by the middle of November to the end of November. The actual deadline is March 15th of 2022. But there's only so much funding for metro areas, the rest will go to rural areas and coal mining towns. So that is the reason for that. So we expect that on that rolling basis, as they award them, we would be notified. So I would guess first quarter of 2022. And Deed is in, I believe it's, well, first quarter of 2022 as well. That one we will submit on December 3rd.
Very good. And that's not, that's not too far away anymore.
No, it is not.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members and port members. Also, the, the discussion about supporting the operations and the potential of utilizing the port authority levy, that's not something that we would do for this upcoming year. We would wait to get through this process of understanding whether we're successful in receiving the grants and, and beginning the initial planning and construction and everything. We would have that as a discussion for next year, leading into 2023. At this juncture, it's not possible for us to turn on the port authority levy until 2023 at the earliest.
And I'm sure since Commissioner Keller has so graciously volunteered to be in the advisory committee, that, that he will look after Commissioner Luns's interest in terms of the brass pool.
Test of us. Dual purpose.
Thank you. And on 1.4 on our agenda is a discussion of the consulting contract for the South Loop Water Park. Mr. Rudling?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, port authority president and port authority members. So this item relates to action that was taken back on September 8th related to the water park project. And just going back to that time when the council and port authority directed staff to work with Triple Five to look at a water park funding model that instead of using a nonprofit model, used a more traditional private financing model. And we've been doing that. In doing that work and that night, the, the council and port authority asked us to move forward with a full feasibility study using HLA in case we had to revert back to the nonprofit model, so we didn't lose time. The Triple Five has commissioned two studies of their own and staff thinks that an adjusted motion from that night or an adjusted direction is appropriate to hire HLA to review those studies and consult with the city and port authority, but not to complete a full feasibility study on their own. Doing so could confuse the markets if they're substantially different. And in doing this, they have a little bit of money and also allow us to get that information from the consultant that, that, you know, we're looking for during that process. So we're recommending that you tweak, tweak the motion if you will and pass these new motions to reflect in doing a consultant contract with that entity for up to $25,000 for services related to the South Loop Water Park as outlined in the agenda item.
Okay. Port Authority needs to take action on this first, but I guess before we do that, any questions, comments? If not, I would then entertain a motion for the port authority. Commissioner Luns?
One, just a quick question. In the memo, do not complete a full report unless the private financing model is not feasible. Are we saying that unless the Triple Five hired consultants determine that it's not feasible? That's what we're saying, correct?
Mr. President and Commissioner Luns, so the, the feasibility of doing the project and getting to a closing is dependent on a lot of different things, including those feasibility.
Excuse me, did I read that wrong? It's not financeable, not feasible. Okay. I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, so, I mean, no real estate project is done or going to start until the closing happens and there's a lot of things that could happen. The most probable one is that the equity and debt markets don't want to do the project for one reason or another and, and that could happen. And so we could be back talking about finishing the HLA study and moving back to the nonprofit model, but, you know, we don't believe that'll, that'll happen, but you just never know until these, until these things close. So does that answer your question, Commissioner Luns?
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? I would then entertain a motion, the port authority needs to take them first. The motion's under 1.4. Do we have a commission ruling to make the motion? Commissioner Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll move that we make the motion to enter in the contract as shown in the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Keller seconded. Any further discussion? Not, do you want to call the roll, please?
Bussie?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Keller?
Aye.
Luns?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye. Motion passes six zero.
City Council, any questions or comments on this? And Jack or Sean, if you have any questions, wave your hands or, or speak up. I'm flipping back and forth here, but I think I'm catching you. Hearing no questions by the City Council, I would look for action.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and move.
Councilmember Lohman?
Move the motion as stated in the agenda packet.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Coulter, to concur with the Port Authority motion to enter into a contract with hotel and leisure advisors for up to $25,000 for the consulting services related to the South Loop Water Park. No further questions from the council? Mr. Billard?
Baloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Aye.
Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries six zero. Thank you much. And now, we are to the point where we're going to enter into closed session. As we've talked about before, I think whenever we go into a closed session, Mr. Rudlinger?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, what we'd like to do is to keep this meeting open just for a moment. We'll go through a few things about how we're going to do the open and closed session, and then we'll actually do that closing, if that's okay.
Okay. And that is basically what I was going to do, is going to talk about there are a variety, just a couple of reasons why we can close official meetings of the City Council and frankly, of the Port Authority also, for HR reasons, to discuss contracts, to discuss negotiations and so on. And that's what this is, one of those things. As, as I mentioned when we started, we'll, we'll go into closed session. We will speak only to the, the items in front of us. We'll come back into open session, and if need be, we will act on our discussions that we had in closed session, and then we will adjourn the meeting from that. Did I miss anything, Shane? Is there anything else that I should be saying there? Or, so now, how about the, the technical part of it? We?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'll share a presentation. We'll go through a few slides, and then we will do the technical piece, which is a little bit of a trick. So all the council and port members will need to, with their devices, log out of the meeting that we're currently in, log in to a closed session meeting, and then we'll verify that the closed session is actually closed and there isn't audio happening through somebody's mic or something like that. And we'll proceed with the closed session, and we will log out of that, log back into the public meeting that, that our staff is going to keep open. And again, consider motion if there, if there is any motions. So the technical piece, there'll be a little bit of a delay because we'll all be logging in and out again.
Any questions on that? We'll get you in and out. And I promise we'll get you in and out and out and back in again. We'll, we'll make it all happen. So if there's no que, no questions, I would look for a motion by the council to adopt the resolution directing the closure of a public meeting by the City Council.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lohman, a second by Councilmember Carter, to close this portion of the City Council meeting. No further discussion by the council? Mr. Billard?
Baloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries six zero.
And I would entertain a similar motion for the Port Authority.
So moved.
Commissioner Peterson moves. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Carter. Any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Bussie?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Keller? Luns?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye. Motion carries six zero.
All right, so officially, we're heading into closed session. We'll see you on the other side if you are watching at home. Thank you much. Back in open session now. And Shane, can you share the motions, please?
Mr. Mayor, I will indeed, as soon as I get rights that I just got them.
We have two motions that came out of the discussion that we had in closed session. And both the City Council and the Port will be making, making these motions and voting on them, and then we'll adjourn tonight's meeting. So on behalf of the City Council, I would look for a motion directing staff to continue negotiations with the property owner and place an item on an upcoming concurrent meeting agenda for consideration of the purchase agreement reflective of the terms discussed during the closed session for the adjoining lands.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lohman, and a council, a second by Councilmember Carter, for the motion as stated. Hearing no further council discussion on this. Mr. Billard?
Baloga? Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries six zero.
And I would entertain a similar motion for the Port Authority.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Keller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Peterson. Any further discussion? Would you please call the roll?
Bussie?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Keller?
Aye.
Luns?
Epstein.
Peterson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye. Five with one abstentions.
And then council, I would look for a motion directing staff to continue discussions regarding the Spruce Shadows Farm with the interested parties.
I'll move that.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Baloga, second by Councilmember Coulter. The motion as stated. No further council discussion. Mr. Billard?
Baloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
No.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries five one.
And I would entertain a similar motion for the Port Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Luns, seconded by Commissioner Peterson. Any further discussion? If not, Mr. Verbrugge, please call the roll.
Bussie?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Keller?
Aye.
Luns?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye. Motion passes six zero.
Very good. That concludes our agenda for tonight's meeting. Thank you for the great discussion. Well done. I appreciate it. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn the council portion of this concurrent meeting.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting on the council side. No further discussion. Mr. Billard?
Baloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries six zero.
And I will adjourn the Port Authority.
Very good.